Good evening and welcome to tonight's City Council, the City of Casa Grande Council meeting. I'll call this meeting to order. First item on our agenda is our invocation, so I think Mark Vanderheiden is here from the Seat of Hope and Presbyterian Church, so Mark, please.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. Yeah, I am representing the Emergency Assistance Ministry here tonight, so let's go ahead and bow our heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for, on behalf of all those who are gathered here tonight, Father, and thank you for your many and abundant blessings, thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work, and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. I'm praying tonight, Father, for our mayor, for our various levels of city officials that are here, and in particular for the assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and finally for personal peace in their lives enjoyed in the tasks that they do. I pray for the agenda tonight, please give us an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in around in our beloved city of Casa Grande. It's in your name I pray, amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Lisa. Okay. The roll call show that everyone is present tonight?
So noted.
Mayor McFarland, regarding our minutes tonight, I move approval of the City Council regular meeting minutes from February 18th, and the, except for the record, the Board of Appeals minutes from November 13th as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve items C1 and C2. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Claims against the city?
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims against the city dated February 12th to 25th, 2020.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Meeting agenda approval. Larry, any changes from staff?
We have none, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone on the dais, any changes? I do have one change, and I'm going to move item N, which is the reports. Since we have an executive session, I'll move it to fall right behind item L. Seeing no other changes, then I'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of the meeting agenda as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, agenda is approved for tonight. We have, we do have a special presentation tonight. Can I ask Ms. Laura Blackman to please come forward?
I can't believe she's retiring. That's crazy.
It's a nice life. So, they've prepared some remarks here, and I thought, thought I would read them because I think it's important, and Laura's been with us a long time. She's retiring after 31 years working for this, for this city, 30?
Yes, a little bit thirty.
Says 31 here.
Thirty point five.
Thirty point five, all right, rounding up. Thirty, so thirty, thirty point five years. But Laura is one of those unique individuals. She really spent her entire career with one organization, which is very unusual, and especially these days, so much appreciated. And Laura started her city career actually in 1989, I think she was 12, with the Community Services Department as a recreation aide, and then an after-school program instructor. So she later took, took a position with the Planning and Development Department as the secretary, and then as administrative assistant. At that point in your, in your career, she decided she wanted to move into the professional ranks of the city, so she took night courses, got her bachelor's degree in business administration from the University of Phoenix, congratulations, which she followed up and obtained a master's degree in planning from Northern Arizona University. So her efforts in getting these degrees obviously allowed her to be promoted within the city. She's done an outstanding job in being promoted in the Planning Department to Planning Assistant, and eventually plant, a planner position in 2006. So as part of your duties, Laura supported the work of the Historic Preservation Society as well, which many of you have seen her up here with those duties with the commission. I'm sure they're going to miss you, you can volunteer. So, including in a recent rewrite of the Historic Preservation zoning regulations, which you did, she's a shining example of a hardworking, and actually going after additional education and you with your masters, and allowing, you know, the progress in your career in our organization, so you really, really do appreciate all of the work and being, working for the city, so thank you. And this plaque, it says Laura Blackman for 30 years of outstanding service to the City of Casa Grande, September 24th, 1989, to March 4th, 2020.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you all, council members. Congratulations. Thank you. I just want to thank you all, and I have joined every minute I've worked with the City of Casa Grande, and if I did it all over again, I would say yes, do it all over again. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You'll be missed, Laura.
Are you saying that to her, Shane?
To Laura. All right. Next item is item G, is our consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion, one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event it will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of the consent agenda as it's presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please, Gloria?
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
I guess I should have asked if anybody wanted to remove something on the consent agenda item. Did anybody, before I vote?
You're good.
Okay. Yes. All right, we'll move to item I, Word of Contracts, and Consider An Ordinance Number 30.
Public comments.
Oh, public comments. I blew right over that, didn't I? Okay, back to item H. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to approach council tonight? If so, please step forward. This is from last week. Old one? Okay. It's just been hanging out up here for a couple weeks, I guess. Is there anybody? Okay, well seeing no one, then we'll close the public comments, and we'll move to item I, Word of Contracts.
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council award a service contract with Western Utility Contracting LLC doing business as overlays for the City of Casa Grande's wastewater bio solids hauling services. This contract provides for the hauling and disposal of our bio solids generated from our wastewater reclamation facility. Under this contract, the bio solids are hauled to the landfill where the landfill staff then blends those with the topsoil material that we import and use that as a cover material, which is required by their permit to operate. A form of solicitation was proposed, and we had three submittals. After reviewing those submittals, we determined the overlays proposal to be the, in the best interest of the city to move forward with. Under this contract, it'll have an initial two-year contract with three additional one-year extensions if the city so chooses. We do have funds available in this year's budget. We estimate we're trending at about 17,500 tons of solids annually at a cost of about $193,000. We do have $216,000 currently in this year's budget for this item, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kevin, could you give a brief overview of what, what the limitations would be for us to do this ourselves? I assume there's equipment and labor time and all of that. Is it, is it simply more cost effective to, to contract out this?
We, we evaluate that during each budget cycle. We look at the costs of our contracts versus doing or performing those services in-house. Right now, we don't currently have the equipment, and we haven't been in a position to get that, the purchase of that equipment, so we're currently evaluating that in this current budget year. We may make that request, but it would require additional manpower as well as additional equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any other questions?
None.
Okay. All right, then I'll consider an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance Number 3190, ordinance of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Western Utility Contractors LLC DBA overlays for the hauling of bio solids, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and the execution of a contract with or purchase order to Western Utilities Contractors LLC DBA overlays.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of ordinance Number 3190 as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Okay, item I two, is Consider Ordinance Number 3191. Kevin?
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract for professional services with CNS Engineering for design of taxiway G at the city's municipal airport in an amount not to exceed $220,000. This taxiway would be used to provide taxiway access to the airport, providing through-the-fence access to parcels within our industrial airpark that the city owns. The intent of this project is to provide, to provide the design of the complete on-airport taxiway, as well as the design of the off-airport taxiway in the industrial park that would provide access for those parcels off of Rockwell Avenue and off of Grumman Avenue. Four firms submitted qualifications that we reviewed. We had originally started negotiations with our top-ranked firm. Those negotiations were unsuccessful, and it was mutually agreed to discontinue that process. We then moved forward with our second highest-ranked firm, CNS, and we've negotiated an appropriate scope and fee for this project. Their first staff has recommended we move forward with the contract with CNS at a base bid amount of $206,155, and a contingency of $13,845, bringing us to that total of $220,000. And those, that project was funded in this year's budget, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kevin, the only question I have is, the index is kind of specialty, airport design stuff?
When we evaluate their scope of work, we look at past projects, and we try to find projects that are similar in size, similar in scope, so that we know that they have that expertise, and they demonstrated that through their submittal of qualifications.
Mr. President? Thinking from FAA?
Not for the design or the construction of this because it provides access to private parcels, it does not benefit the airside of the airport.
I think this is a great step in getting these parcels more marketable to tenants for the airport use, so I'm glad to see that this is moving forward. Can we get an idea of, of, with this project, roughly what percentage or how many lots we'll have that have through-the-fence access, and then how many are remaining after this?
So this would be one of three taxiways that entered, I, I should, let me take that back. For the areas that are in Phase Three, it'll be one of three taxiways that would provide access, so this will be just less than one-third of the area that it would service, this one taxiway. There are additional taxiways in other phases of the industrial park that are we not, that we are not responsible for constructing.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I just wanted to, you know, publicly thank David out at the airport, because I had opportunity to meet with him, and he really went over some of the maps and explained it in depth, and I think that, you know, like Matt said, I think this is a great opportunity for us to market that area, but he did a really good job, so thank you for sharing him with me.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, then I'll consider an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance Number 3191, an ordinance of the council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from GNS Engineering, Inc., to provide for the design of taxiway G at the City of Casa Grande Municipal Airport, authorizing expenditure of public funds in an amount not to exceed $220,000, and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance Number 3191 as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Okay, we'll move to item I three, Consider Resolution Number 5219.
Thank you. Staff is recommending the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract for professional services with Strand Associates for the design of the fuel farm improvements at the municipal airport in an amount not to exceed $46,000. The fuel farm consists of two fuel tanks, one Jet A fuel tank, and then one 100 low lead fuel for aircraft. These revenues that are generated are a critical component to the services and revenues at the airport, and in order to maintain the quality and safety of the fuel that we dispense, the existing avgas tank needs to be replaced, so we did start to notice trends towards fuel contamination, but we do have a filtration system, we don't want to scare anybody. The fuel that we distribute is safe, but we're starting to see an increase in what we're pulling from our filters, so that's an indication of the condition of the inside of the tank. The project will provide for the design services necessary to scope out and specify the work and materials required so that we can bid this project out for tank replacement. We did go through our on-call professional services list to identify Strand as being a highly qualified and experienced in these types of projects. We did budget enough money to get this project started in this year's budget. We do have a base budget of, excuse me, a base contract amount of $42,250 with a contingency of $3,750, so not to exceed 46,000. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
What kind of precipitated you to say this, this is something we need to do?
Well, anytime you maintain a fuel facility, there are certain things that you do for regular maintenance. You look at your fuel filters that you change on a regular basis, you sump the tank on a daily basis to make sure there's no water in there, and of course, the one place you don't want to run out of gas or have a fuel problem is when you're in the air. I mean, you don't want it anywhere, but that's not a good place. So it's just, it's part of the process of managing a system, and we've started to see the signs that indicate the inside of the tanks were starting to deteriorate, we've had that confirmed by a consultant, so now we're moving for the, forward with the process of replacing that tank.
Sounds like you've been on top of it, so just kind of wanted to know.
Any else, any other questions? Okay, can I get an ordinance resolution, please, Gloria?
Resolution Number 5219, a resolution of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Strand Associates, Inc., to provide for the design of fuel farm, fuel farm improvements at the City of Casa Grande Municipal Airport, authorizing expenditure of public funds in an amount not to exceed 46,000, and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland?
Go ahead, Mayor.
I move for the adoption of Resolution Number 5219 as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please, Gloria?
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, item I four, Consider Ordinance Number 3192.
So we're back out for the wastewater operations. Staff is recommending that the mayor and city council award a contract to Legend Technical Services of Arizona to provide environmental laboratory services in an annual amount not to exceed the budgeted amount in our budget. We currently have $136,000 budgeted for these services in this year's budget, and then that varies depending on how the rules and regs and, and what we're required to test or report on to meet our regulatory compliance on an annual basis, so that, that may change. It is a one-year contract with two additional one-year periods, and our current contract is set to expire shortly. Legend's Technical Services has been providing our laboratory services for the past four years, I believe, maybe five at this point, and they've done a great job for us, we've never had any problems with them. It does, we're required through several areas, the Safe Drinking Water Act, Arizona Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit, the Aquifer Protection permit, and our Industrial Pretreatment Permit Program to provide all these types of tests to meet the federal, state, and local regulations. The sanitation division also uses this contract for their groundwater monitoring, which is one of their test requirements on an annual basis. And I apologize, I don't have any of the funding that we're going to spend for, for sanitation, I didn't include that in this RCA, so I apologize. I, I don't think it's a large amount, I think it's under 10,000 annually to do those tests.
So it's not included in that, that amount?
I, no, the, the, the 136,000 is the budget amount for the services in wastewater only, so there's a separate budget amount that's set aside in the sanitation landfill budget, and I just, I don't know what that amount is, so the contract is written not to exceed our budgeted amounts. We did have two firms that submitted their qualifications, and, and we chose Legend's Technical Services as the most qualified firm, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
That safe drinking, do, do you produce potable water, drinkable water?
Not at our wastewater facility, however, this includes, I probably didn't say it, it includes wastewater and our water company, which is the Copper Mountain Water Company, so we do produce potable water out there, or at least that's what the tests tell us.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, then I'll consider ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance Number 3192, an ordinance of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Legend Technical Services of Arizona, Inc., for environmental lab services, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing the execution of a contract with or purchase order to Legend's Technical Services of Arizona, Inc.
Mayor McFarland, I will move for passage of ordinance Number 3192 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, last I items, I five, Consider Ordinance Number 3193.
I promised last one for this evening. Staff recommends the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to contract with Ellison Mills Contracting LLC to provide design, phase assistance, and complete construction services for guaranteed maximum price of $1,999,040 for the construction manager at risk contract for construction of the Florence Street, Main Avenue, and Third Street project. We've referred to this project as South of the Tracks project, however, the Third Street portion is north of the tracks, just for clarification. So the project area being Florence Street from Main Avenue to the curve approximately 230 feet past Third Avenue, just before the drain pan across the road. And then Main Avenue from Sacatoon to Florence Street and Third Street from Florence Street West, 170 feet. These are all part of the old concrete roadway system that was constructed a long time ago.
Are you going to grind the concrete?
So during this design phase, we're going to be determining what we're going to do for the pavement replacement. We have already determined that a similar grind like we did in Phase Two where we kept the original concrete and ground two inches off and then resurfaced that, it's not possible with the condition of the concrete on these streets based on our core samples. So we will be removing and replacing that pavement section. So that's part of the contract is to finish that design and come up with evaluation of those alternatives that then rolls into that maximum guaranteed price for construction. We are doing several ADA ramps. We're going to be repairing some curb and gutter, and there is some street-like work that needs to be done. The design phase is going to be about two and a half months for pre-construction. And then once construction starts with this procurement process, it's going to be a very fast-paced project. We anticipate six months for completion. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. So we have a design firm that we started the design with under our on-call system. And then a portion of this contract will cover the design firm's costs as part of Ellison Mills' contract to finish the project. So they'll be a subcontractor to Ellison Mills to finish the full design and then help with any engineering services during construction.
Anybody else have any other questions? Would be nice to see that finished. Mr. Powell especially happy.
Yeah, I'm going to frame this.
All right, seeing no other comments or questions, then I'll call for an ordinance number, please Gloria.
Ordinance number 3193, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Ellison Mills Contracting LLC to provide construction manager at risk services for the Florence Street, Main Avenue, and Third Street improvements project, authorizing expenditure of public funds in an amount not to exceed $1,999,039.52, authorizing the execution of a contract and authorizing the transfer of budget authority between accounts.
Mayor McFarland, I'm thrilled to approve, move approval of ordinance number 3193 as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
Okay, next item is our boards and commissions. Tonight, we're considering the approval, an appointment of Anna Etheridge to the Personnel Advisory Board with a term to expire on February 2nd, 2024. I don't see Anna here in the room, but I just want to publicly thank her for really taking on this role and volunteering for this commission. We have several still open, some openings, so if anybody's interested, please talk to Gloria, Gloria's office, Carla, anybody, anybody in the clerk's office. I'll entertain a motion to approve Anna Etheridge.
Don't move. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Congratulations, Anna. You are officially on. Yay. Okay. I guess the next item here is our reports. No resolutions, no public meetings, right Larry? Nothing? We don't want to skip something again. Okay. Well, then let's start with reports and we'll start with you.
Me? He's like, ew. Just a couple things, and I know you guys probably read in Larry's report that him and I attended the Casca Union High School District Workforce Development Meeting. And I'm really excited to see what's going on out there with the Brewer Plumbing Academy. You know, we've talked about having in our strategic plan, bringing apprenticeship programs, and it's just so exciting to see that there's one here already. This program is really cool. I mean, they actually have, in the old Votech building at the district, actual walls that are built, they're working on plumbing, they have 30 people in the academy. It's amazing because they're actually paid to be part of this academy. And then when they graduate in 90 days, is that what it is? I think 90 days, they'll go into an apprenticeship program and then directly, you know, and then go in to be, you know, full-time plumbers. It's just amazing. I'm just really excited to see that. Yes, I know. And they're working on it. That's what's great about Dr. Beebe. He sees the vision. He's been talking to you a lot and Larry. And, you know, he really wants to try to get these young people engaged and get more apprentice programs. So that was great. The Casca Elementary School District did a leadership summit, is an anti-bullying summit. They had about 75 to 80 middle school people come. And I'll tell you, you know, when you think of bullying, you know, we all have kids and we've seen it, but it just amazes me the problem that exists. And, you know, someone from the Attorney General's office was there, did a presentation. And when they asked these 75, 80 leaders in the middle schools, you know, how many of them have been bullied or have seen bullying, all of them raised their hand. So it's definitely an issue. It's growing with all the social media. And I think the only thing I ask is, for those of you that, you know, are parents and grandparents, you know, pay attention, you know, pay attention to what's going on on that cell phone and, you know, and to be open to, it could be your child that is doing something here. So we just have to be aware. I brought up before the emergency assistance ministry is going through a revisioning process. Mark Vanderheiden was here today. You know, we're finding that the role of this group is a little different now that the CG helps. Resource Center is open, so we are planning to try to engage the faith community, and we're going to do, with the mayor's help, a faith town hall. And we're going to invite the, you know, churches from around the city to come together and give us their feedback on what we can do to try to engage more and get them involved because we want to make sure we still keep this important program moving. I do, it's, I gave it to you, I emailed you, but it's the end of April. I'll let you guys know when that date is. I just didn't. Census, March 12th, you've probably seen the banners everywhere. Thanks to the school district, Dr. Beebe and Dr. Gonzalez have been a huge part of this census committee, and everything is, the banners are out. The Latonya has been wonderful with the city on getting everything organized. There's videos online, there's a sample questionnaire. So if anyone has any questions, you know, go to the city website and there's a whole section on the census. The Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year, the mayor and I were there. That's literally my favorite event every year, just seeing all these young people getting awards and all their families. And the Boys and Girls Club does a great job, so that was great. State of the City is coming up on the 11th, I'm sure the mayor will talk about. And then this Friday, the Caesar Chavez Memorial Committee is holding their, our 14th Annual Scholarship Dinner. So thanks to all of you for donating to the silent auction. And for those of you that are going to attend, we're going to be awarding 47 students scholarship. So appreciate everyone's support. Is that it?
Okay, Mr. Powell?
Thought you were going that way.
He is mixing it up.
No, I, most of the meetings I've been regarding lately have regarded water. And things are turning out pretty good. As I say, I've got, the state is looking for a, for the federal government to do a feasibility study on the plan to harvest rainwater and, or floodwater. And the, it's almost, it goes to the senate and then it'll be sent from the state of Arizona. And then the, as I say, the other one that also has been involved in it is the Natural Conservation District, Natural Resource Conservation District. And they've approved it nationally. So they're going to go to Washington DC and go to BAT to try to get some augmentation done. That's one of the things that stood out in the meetings we go to is we talk about conservation and some other things, but we don't really talk about augmentation. And when you don't have enough water, the prime thing should be to try to bring some more water in some way. And so that's something they'll be looking at. And the Odom-Tosh turned out really well. The police chief's not here tonight, but he, the announcer brought attention to him. The police department put in money for the buckles.
Oh.
And I told him he's a big fan, so they're going to try to get him, he and Steve in the Wild Horse Race this next year. They just need one more member. And I think it'll be a lot of fun, but, so anyway, he, the, I see Skylar brought one by for Central Arizona College. They really have a good rodeo and a good rodeo team. And if anybody gets a chance, go out and watch and support them. That's all I have, yeah.
Okay. Mary?
I don't have a whole lot, just kind of want comment on tonight, some of the action we took is the improvements to the airport and that because the air-
Excuse me, Councilmember Cortson, just want to remind people when we're dealing with reports, some of these items, especially those that are ordinances, you're still going to be voting on a second time. So reporting on those is not really reporting on current events, so we shouldn't be doing that.
Okay, no, thank you. How about the improvements to the south side of the tracks? Yes, that too. I'm just a very happy person about everything. And I apologize, I'm glad, no, I'm glad. I didn't realize I would come up for a second vote, so. That's it.
I'm going to tread lightly here. We had the Youth Commission Garden of Sunshine event on Saturday, nice, beautiful weather. I want to thank Councilwoman Donna McBride, since she was the closest to the mayor Pro Tem. She got to speak on your behalf since the mayor was dealing with some stuff. And so it went great, and the families were there, and they planted some new plants and gave some of the families some plants to take home to kind of spread the garden. That was kind of a new thing. And I want to thank Community Services Department, Steve Hardisty, for getting cleaned up over there before. They did a great job, I appreciate that. The next big youth commission event, besides the general plan, is going to be at their meeting, is the Day of Shredding, is April 18th, at First American Credit Union on Penala Avenue, which I'll be reminding as we get closer to that. And I was reading the paper this morning in Prescott Valley, I know the mayor up there pretty well, and they're losing a neon sign, is a really neat one. And I just thought how fortunate we were to have our neon sign park, so. And they're going to have a chamber event there on March 25th, the after hour, so come on out to that, it'll be a lot of fun. But I was just like, man, it's sad to lose those signs, but we have a great, you know, how neat it was.
It ended up in our park, didn't it?
No. It says Prescott Valley on it. And the governor came and spoke at the Penal Partnership Breakfast, which was great, talked about the I-10 widening of the bridge and had the dollars and how much they were doing. And our very own mayor got up in front of everybody and said, well, what about the other money to widen the rest of the road? And I thank you for that, mayor. But they have a plan to go to Washington DC and do that. Am I good, Brett? Okay, okay. So they have a plan to do that, so, but I was really happy that it's such on the forefront and everything, and that the mayor has been such a big part of pushing that. We appreciate it. And he also, he spoke about the coronavirus, so I was going to remind everyone to wash their hands. And my wife said the other day, she goes, all these governors seem like they have the same stuff to say about the coronavirus. It's like they went to a meeting. I go, well, actually, the governor said they did go to a meeting with the president and told them all about it. So it's national and there's a lot of stuff coming out, so I just wanted to tell everyone to wash their hands because that's the best thing you can do, which you should do anyway. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Matt. How about Donna?
Piggyback on what Matt said about the Garden of Sunshine, you know, it was really encouraging because I had an opportunity after the event to talk to a family. And one of the youth commission members had called them to invite them. And she said, you know, the young lady that called just sat there on the phone as I was crying when I got the invitation because it meant so much because she had lost her grandson. So it was nice to know that our youth commission is being taught leadership skills in all areas, including kindness and respect. So I was really, I was really proud of that, to be part of that. Just a couple things, we had the Business Outlook Lunch, and the chamber did a really good job with Lucid being there. And then I just want to kudos to the high school and to Superintendent Beebe because one of the things that he is coming up with, and I had an opportunity to talk with him briefly about it, is that he is going to be starting a program where the students can actually get a letter in community service. And I am so encouraged by that and that they can actually get a letter every year and then they can get a cord during graduation for the amount of hours that they're doing. And I think that that just validates the things that we're talking about with our boards and commissions and things like that. So I'm excited about that. And then I also wanted to mention, I had not known too much about this group. It's called MOA, the Military Officers Association of America. They were in town over by Ropes and Ranch this weekend, and I attended their luncheon and was their speaker. And these were folks from all over Arizona that came to our area to meet as kind of like a regional board. And so I was able to fill them in on the resource center and what we're doing to help homeless. And these people were from Phoenix and Owatuki and up in the, you know, northern part of the state. So it was really encouraging how impressed they were and was asking us for copies of our street sheets and all those kinds of things. So it was really nice to be part of that conversation with them and to have them here in Casa Grande. So that's about it.
Thank you, Donna. Bob?
Mayor going last has its perks. Everything I had on my list has already been covered, I don't need to talk about any further, so I'll pass.
That way you don't value it.
Sorry, Bob.
Well, it's been a busy first two months of the year. I'm hoping that it slows down a little bit, but it's been kind of crazy. They're redoing our offices too, so if you come up, they're redoing the wood floors. So no meetings, that's a good thing. The good thing is we've had to shove meetings. Yeah, we've been sending them somewhere else. I did attend the Save Our Students Mission Rail has this group, they call it SOS, Save Our Students. And this year, they did it at Casca Union High School Cafeteria, and it was called Bites and Baskets. And it was really well-attended and had, probably had 10, at least 10 restaurants there. And so if you went away hungry, you were trying very hard. I don't even think I could eat everything at every location, but it was a lot of fun. They have the baskets there for, that they raise money, and then all of the tickets to get in. So it was really well-attended and all the- well-attended, and all the money goes back to the students who need, who need stuff, like some of the homeless kids that we've got that buy backpacks and clothes. It supplies the stores they have at each of the high schools.
Right. It's the closet.
Yeah, the closet. And I did attend the governor's state, I mean, I call it the state of the state, but it was just the governor speaking for the Penal Partnership, and it was, it was good. It was good to see, good to see the governor down here. It was nice that he came down, and he is in support of our I-ten widening, so that's been very positive on his part. So, and he's aware that it's an issue for us, and it's been elevated also in the ADOT planning process as well. Also attended the Lucid Topping Off Ceremony, which was the final piece of steel that was put on the Lucid plant, and that was last Wednesday. And I will tell you, there were probably two hundred steelworkers there that were, that were in the picture, and it was, it was a very cool ceremony. And six weeks from the time they put the first piece of steel on the foundations.
Wow.
Six weeks, and they got the entire building done. They say it's the fastest erection of this type of facility ever in the United States. Apparently, it's been done in other countries, but not here. So anyway, they're ahead of schedule now, which is good. They were happy. Got a chance to work with their team, their operations team. They were all here in town last week, all ten or eleven of them, and they will all be moving here to Casagrande or to Arizona. Can't promise they'll all move to Casagrande, since three or four are here now, and only one actually lives in Casagrande of the three. So there's two that are up in the valley and one in Maricopa. But they're excited, they're excited to be here. And one thing they did say, the coolest, was that they told me that of the forty people they've hired from Arizona are some of the best employees they've ever worked with. So that was a super nice, nice thing to say, number one, but exciting to hear also that they were so excited about the employees that they've hired so far. So I'm looking forward to obviously hiring a lot more. We continue to work on our water resources program. There's basically going to be three parts to it. There's a conservation, there's better use of our current, current water that we have, and then also trying to find new supplies. So those will be the three focus areas that you're going to hear a lot more about as we move down the road. Coffee hour tomorrow. I'm going to be out at the Ironwood Villages, so if anybody is in the area, well, they've invited me to come in and have coffee with their group. So we're going to talk to them probably about some of the stuff that we just talked about tonight. There's a ribbon cutting this week also at Oceano Hair Salon. Anyway, another new beauty salon opening up. And then I think we mentioned it, but the Cactus Flyings this weekend, it's Friday and Saturday. Okay, so it's Friday and Saturday, not Saturday, Sunday.
Four.
You have the breakfast on Saturday, don't you? Uh, yes. And then there's a steam event this weekend, too, in Pirate Park that the-
Oh, I forgot.
No, it's in Pirate.
It's at Pirate.
Pirate's right over here, and it's at ten o'clock. And it's, isn't it?
Do you know which park they ended up making it to? I hate to say that one.
I thought they said, I thought it was Carmagnat.
It was in-
Turned out to be Carmagnat. I didn't get a final on that.
Yeah, we'll find out.
Okay.
Yeah, we can mention it on the phone.
All right, please let me know, because I've got it down as Pirate Park. But that's where it was last year, so.
Yeah, they moved it.
And then last, last thing, I've got several others, but you guys have mentioned most of them. So the last thing I wanted to mention is that we continue to have some vandalism in Carmagnat Park. And I really want to implore people to keep your eyes open and notice if somebody is doing something wrong. If they're doing something wrong, take a picture of it and report them. Because there's people throwing rocks on the basketball courts, which when, if you have a wheelchair, you can't use because it's just covered with pebbles. They ripped off in the new tennis courts, the seats that are in there, they're bolted to the concrete floor, and they busted those loose. They've broken center posts in the tennis courts, you know, for the nets. Vandalism to the ladies' bathroom over there to the point where they couldn't even get the door open. I mean, who does this kind of stuff? It's ridiculous. We have a new park. We spend a lot of money, a lot of your money, a lot of our citizens' money on putting this park and getting it into really nice shape for the citizens to have a handful of people, and it may not even be a handful, it could be two or three, to abuse it like they abuse it, and I think it's just wrong. And if anybody sees anything, please call us and let us know.
See something, say something.
Yeah, if you see something, say something. So, I mean, it's ridiculous. You guys can take a look at Steve's note there. But anyway, not to end on a sour note, but, but there you go.
Yes, what it is.
Did you see the picture?
Okay. Anybody else have anything else? I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Still moved, second?
Okay, moved and seconded to go into executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll stand adjourned for five minutes until we clear the council. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight.